All right, so I'm sitting in for Amanda tonight. She was otherwise occupied, but I think we're going to call the meeting to order. So, good evening. Welcome to the October 18th meeting of the Sherburne School Committee. My name is Dennis Quant and I call this meeting to order at 5:31 PM. We're pleased to hold this open meeting in person at Sherburne Town Hall this evening and there are also live streaming with DSC TV for those who wish to view remotely. Please note this meeting is also being recorded. So, one thing that before we kind of get on with the agenda, we just want to take a moment to say our thoughts and prayers with our Boston Metco community as Jean McGuire remains hospitalized after the attack in Franklin Park recently. She was not only the first Black woman on the Boston School Committee, but she's also the Metco founder and is a very important part of our whole community here, so we wish her well. Next on our agenda here are community comments. Seeing nobody on Zoom, we can forego that piece unless anybody else has anything. So, first item is the CSA co-president update, which I think you're going to take off your school committee hat and put on your CSA co-president hat. Christine?
Thank you so very much. All right, please forgive me for speaking from my notes, but there's a lot going on. So it's been an exciting start to the school year and I'm pleased to say that the CSA is running on all cylinders. As some of you might know, I'm the co-president along with Wendy Epik of this year's CSA, with our vice presidents, Mega Cadialla and Ariana Delaney, Treasurer Christina Pantier and Secretary Brecken Schneider. We're all honored to be in our positions. I'm pleased to share that we've been fortunate enough to gather a great team of CSA board members and volunteers for this year. We have about 50 caregivers who are invested in raising funds for the further enrichment of our Pine Hill students and we are always looking for more, whether you commit to volunteer for the year or for one event, we are always very happy to have you. It's only October and we've already accomplished so much. Our team launched a historically successful 5K thanks to Kristin and Karen Abrams. We've welcomed new families into the Pine Hill community, welcomed our Metco families, held a well-attended ice cream social and celebrated our teachers and custodial staff. Looking ahead, the schedule remains packed. Right now, we are gearing up for our annual Monster Mash Halloween celebration, getting ready for a book celebration week and preparing for a fabulous and fun spring gala. Thanks to our communications team, you can find out more about these events on our CSA website or the weekly CSA newsletter sent out through the school. Providing exciting, engaging enrichment programs for the students of Pine Hill is our mission and the enrichment team has been hard at work planning out the year's schedule of events. They've already booked a Chinese acrobat, capoeira and Brazilian music group and a trip for the kindergarteners to go to the Discovery Museum and act it. Wendy Epik and I look forward to addressing you all again in the spring and highlighting some of the great activities that take place between now and then. And as we learn more from the Equity Audit, the CSA is reflecting on ways we too can ensure our events and practices are as inclusive and welcoming as possible. We're fortunate to have an incredible partner in this and all efforts, Dr. Brown. Dr. Brown recently met with Wendy, Mega, Ariana and myself to discuss bolstering an environment of equity, inclusion and belonging through the CSA. We all agree that it's just the beginning of a wonderful, ongoing conversation. Please know Wendy Epik and I are always happy to answer any questions or provide information on how to get involved and thank you for your support, your interest and we hope to see you all at the Spring Gala. Shameless plug. That's my end.
Thanks Christine.
Thank you so much Dennis.
Any questions before we move on? Next up are the updates and reports, so we'll start with Beth, your superintendent.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the CSA for your continued work and support of our students. Both of my children benefited from years of enrichment programs and exciting opportunities and I'm excited to see it through fresh eyes this year as Denny, wearing his teaching and learning hat, gets to see all that you bring to bolster the teaching and learning at Pine Hill. So, thank you to you and your team. Some general updates.
I'm presenting that to the Zoom as well. Anybody is or no?
No.
No?
No. It is in the packet, so. So, some general building updates and district updates. As you know, we celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day for the first time in Dover Sherburne last week, thanks to our Pine Hill now fourth graders and the school calendar has been updated with several additional holidays to recognize Rosh Hashanah, Napvile, Diwali, Lunar New Year, Ramadan and the Eid holidays. So, we're excited to be marking those on our calendars to make sure that we are talking about them in the classrooms, supporting families in their holiday celebrations at home and learning as a community as we move forward. I continue to do building business so far. I'm happy to say that I've been in each building every week since school started and I'm hoping to keep up the trend. I was able to visit three out of the four open houses this year in the district unfortunately. Pine Hill and Chicarene were on the same evening, so I had to choose and having spent so many lovely years at Pine Hill, I chose Chicarene this year, but I'll be at Pine Hill next year. I also voluntarily participated in the Charting the Course workshop that many of you have been through and had an opportunity to, now having lived through school committee meetings for five years, go back and revisit the why and the how behind many of the protocols and processes and really appreciated that opportunity. And the last general update that I would like to mention is that we are going to be circling back with our special education audit. Four years ago, we underwent an audit with the help of Dorsey Yearley and Deb Levine, very astounded special educational leaders in the Metro West area. They helped us reorganize our special education model and look at additional programming and now that we have many new positions and new programs in place, we feel that it's important to circle back to make sure that we met the objectives that we are setting out to meet as a district and that we have all of the supports in place to make sure that our kids are getting what they need, both in special education and otherwise. So, more to come on that. An update on my entry plan, given that this is one of my goals this year. To date, I've had 37 individual meetings with school community members, school leaders, union leaders and town officials. I've had three teacher-focused groups with three more to come. I've had three parent and caregiver groups with three more to come and there'll be a survey going out later this month to capture feedback from students, educators and families who weren't able to meet with me in person. Again, asking what it is that everyone loves about the Dover Sherburne schools that we want to make sure we maintain well into the future and where we think we have room for growth and improvement. Again, looking at data and documents as part of this process will be important and continuing to visit classrooms and buildings and seeing learning in our facilities and action will be part of this as well. Denny and I hope of doing classroom and building visits together and I continue to do them with our principals and look forward to putting all of this together this spring into strategic objectives that will launch our next plan for the next three to five years. Another goal this year is around the Equity Audit. So, as you know at our last joint meeting, NYU presented the findings of the Equity Audit along with the advisory committee that supported this work from start to finish. At this point in time, we are looking at the findings and processing them and starting to prioritize the recommendations because there were so many of them, so many important ones, but where do we begin? So, we looked at the recommendations with the leadership team and Denny and I are going to be visiting all four faculties to process the findings and prioritize from their perspectives where we should begin the work in support of all of our kids. Professional development will certainly be part of the Equity Audit findings moving forward. The leadership team, we meet every other Wednesday focused on learning and conversing and moving together in a professional capacity. Our educators will have their full day professional development on November 28th, that Monday after Thanksgiving and Denny is doing a fabulous job bringing in lots of experts and consultants to work with our educators on a number of topics. I'm sure he'll discuss that with you at some point and then provide opportunities for teachers to continue learning well past the November date based on interest and need. We have two community events coming up to talk about the Equity Audit. The first is our leadership team will be traveling to Boston on November 2nd to meet with our Boston families so that we can have a meet and greet, get to know each other a little bit more and talk about next steps for Dover Sherburne and how we can strengthen our partnership. And the second one was tentatively scheduled for November 3rd. We are going to change that date. Unfortunately, there is a mistake on the calendar and that is the opening night of the high school play, so we will be moving the community forum probably two weeks forward and we'll get that data to everyone as soon as possible. The good news is that we've had a lot of RSVPs so far and a lot of interesting people joining us, so hopefully we'll have an equal number when we move the date and we'll certainly keep you posted. Lastly, in regard to our DEI work, we had our first DSA meeting last week on Zoom. We had a good turnout. I know 3:30 in the afternoon is a difficult time for both educators trying to get home and parents and community members also trying to get home and support their kids, but certainly we'll be following up with everyone who expressed interest to find a way to support our efforts moving forward. And the last is just around data. In your packets, thanks to Denny's efforts, you'll notice the MCAS scores for Pine Hill School were included for your review. While that is certainly important and Dr. Brown will be working with her PLC leaders and grade level leaders to look at the data and take away information that would support perhaps areas in the content areas where we need to go deeper or broader, perhaps identifying individual or small groups of kids that could benefit from our interventions. It is one measure, so we'll certainly look at it and take what we can, but a reminder too that there are so many other measures of success that we want to keep in mind is the district. And in the handout, I included a chart that has what I see as three categories of measures of success. One around academics, of course, MCAS, SATs, APs, if you look at K to 12. The middle category around wellness and social emotional learning and making sure that our kids are happy and healthy and able to learn. And then the last category around opportunities and resources, which listening to our presentation around CSA, hearing always all the activities that are available for students after school and as they get older and progress through the middle and high school years in terms of coursework and projects, that's certainly something that we should celebrate because DSA has so much to offer our kids. Lastly, I'll just mention oftentimes when we talk about success, we talk about magazine rankings and I know that Boston Magazine just recently came out with their most recent rankings. We are ranked to number five and I just want to mention to the committee that while we understand that there's more to measure in our district than the rankings, for example, MCAS scores, now that we're keeping more of our students in district as opposed to sending them out to special placements, our MCAS scores are going to fluctuate. Now that we're allowing and encouraging more of our students to act us AP courses in higher rigor, our scores are going to fluctuate. Now that we're encouraging because of challenge success students to consider traveling, gap years before going straight to college, our score is going to fluctuate. So, again, a reminder to look at our values as a district, that they're not corollary necessarily with what Boston Magazine thinks is important and I think it's also important to mention that the data that Boston Magazine shared publicly is not accurate. Our SAT scores in reading, math were underrepresented, they're actually higher in reality. College attendance, Boston Magazine said we had 87.6% of our students going to college. It's actually 97% of our students going to college and in terms of teachers evaluations, excuse me. According to Boston Magazine, we had 10% of our teachers ranked exemplary where in reality we had 34% of our teachers ranked exemplary, so just another reason to take that information with a grain of salt. I'm hoping to take questions.
Have you seen other districts use like composite score or something that they use to evaluate sort of progress against goals and sort of measurement? I think one of the things that I've heard from sort of constituents is it's kind of nice to just have something packaged and ranked for, you know, everybody just has that sort of, you know, pulled towards just having something simple and nice and easy to understand. Are there other districts that use sort of their own composite to kind of help them understand where they're trending or tracking over time, kind of compare themselves to themselves rather than to others where it may be very difficult or impossible to draw that comparison?
Yeah, that's a great question and I'm sure there's districts out there that we can explore and learn about. I know that there are a handful of districts that are part of MCIEA, which is a consortium of schools that are going away from standardized MCAS and instead doing project-based learning and portfolios instead and they've developed an entire way of measuring progress in a more qualitative way and we've been looking at the questions that they ask similar to the questions that you would see on an Equity Audit survey or climate and culture survey as one way of doing that. I think as we move forward with the Equity Audit, Brown University has a fabulous dashboard in terms of how they're marking their progress in DEI work. So, I think there's certainly places that we can look to and pull together something that can track progress over time. We have plenty of surveys that go out to our kiddos to look at kind of their social emotional wellness, we can look at behavior, attendance, but certainly we want to do anyways coming out of the pandemic and in relation to change in start times. So, there's lots of things that we want to look at. We've also been looking at software and platforms that we can use such as Panorama versus a few others. So, I feel like the pieces are falling into place and it would certainly be a good time for us to identify those measures and get them locked in so that we can look at them over time. Great suggestion, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for Superintendent Quant? Great, thank you. Dennis?
Yes. So, it's good to see everybody again tonight, continuing the work on my entry plan and I've been into Pine Hill a lot for all-school meeting on Fridays, gotten to go into I think almost all the kindergarten, first grade classrooms at this point and I made some friends in kindergarten last week, which was fun. I wanted to just focus the update for you all today on our best practices, professional development that happened on September 21st. Last time I spoke to you, we talked about our instructional launch in August, which is really gearing the teachers up for this early release professional development on September 21st. I think that what was really powerful about this professional development for teachers is that we had our instructional leaders, our PLC leaders lead it and facilitate it. So, when you have your colleagues that are the ones that are up there leading the professional development, I think it gives you a whole different type of buy-in and I think that it led to some really constructive conversations that we had. So, the professional development on September 21st, teachers continued to think about what best practices look like in the classroom. They were able to think about powerful learning experiences they had had throughout their lives, take those experiences and then come up with the characteristics of powerful learning that, you know, they wanted to use and see in their classrooms more. So, in the end, they used those to come up with a list of 10 best practices that they voted on. They narrowed it down from I think it was like 27 best practices. They voted on them, it really became the school's consensus and they came up with a list of 10 best practices. They fleshed those out a little bit more to turn them into descriptive sentences and then they also thought about these best practices and what do they look like, sound like and feel like in the classroom. Teachers and staff are going to use these best practices towards their evaluation goals this year and the leadership team is going to use these to help focus our walkthroughs and the conversations we're having with teachers about what we're seeing going on in the classroom. A few of the sample best practices that came from Pine Hill that day, I'll just read a few of them for you. One said that relevant and meaningful learning is dependent on students being given choice and having the flexibility to determine task, process and product. Another one said when a learning environment brings joy, it fosters rich, engaging opportunities to promote lifelong learners. Another one talked about the importance of a calm and positive environment that combines safety, security and accessibility. And then another best practice focused on self-awareness and the importance of reflection in the classroom, having our students, even our younger students reflect on the progress that they're making, what they're good at, things that they still want to improve on. So, they're going to take these best practices now and they're going to go back to this activity at our next early release in early November and they're going to refine them a bit more. They're going to think about what are the specific activities at each grade level that fall in line with these best practices? So, is there a project in social studies in third grade that falls in line with the idea of choice and flexibility? What are the parts of the classroom that they see as bringing students joy? So, they're going to dig even deeper into these best practices as we move forward on that. One of the big things that we focused on and that we'll continue to focus on is this idea of engagement. So, in your packets, I put together a slide that has a ladder on it, which I call kind of the ladder of learning or the ladder of engagement. And at the bottom of it is this idea of resistance, so that's when students just flat out don't want to do something. For a teacher, that's a lot of classroom management skills just to get students to go with the task that's at hand. If you go up, that leads to periodic compliance, so sometimes students are engaging and following the directions. Above that is passive compliance, so that's when the teacher has to do a lot of redirecting and still has to lead students through a lot of the learning. But then the top three rungs of the ladder are really the most important ones, active compliance, engagement and deep engagement. Active compliance is that if you walked into a classroom, you would see students busy and at work doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, if a teacher is giving out a group work assignment where students are discussing a topic and have a worksheet in front of them, active compliance is when you walk into the classroom and the students are just doing that. There's no disruptions, but they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. The step above that is engagement and that would be if the students had more open-ended questions, if they were engaging in discussion, asking each other questions in these small groups, kind of probing each other for more information, saying, "Oh, I heard what you said, I want to hear more about that. I agree with what you said, can you tell me more about that?" That's the level of engagement and then the highest rung of the ladder, deep engagement, that is kind of the ultimate place that we want to be and that's if the teacher never even gave those groups of students questions and said, "You create an inquiry question and the supporting questions and then go and explore it. Use what you know about finding information, finding sources, to go engage in that learning yourself." So, deep engagement is really where we want to get students at, sort of the higher order of thinking skills live in like Bloom's taxonomy when we ask students to evaluate and synthesize and apply. And it's not a coincidence either that those higher levels on the ladder of engagement and deep engagement fall hand in hand with things like our profile of graduate characteristics, with the ideas of UDL, of choice and voice and flexibility. So, it's nice to see these best practices, to see these levels of engagement, then to see the things that the district has been working on like profile of the graduate, MTSS, elements of equity, see those all really come together. And I think for our teachers and staff who have had a lot of work the past couple of years, it's making them see that, you know, what good teaching is, is good teaching and that they could be doing UDL, MTSS, you know, following through on the Equity Audit, doing profile of the graduate, but really what we're doing is just deeply engaging our students. So, that's the kind of the path we're going to, to further explore those ideas this year and I'm looking forward to digging in with teachers more with this in classroom conversations and meetings with them, just to talk about all the possibilities that we have in front of us to explore deep engagement.
One question I've got, so that's all great, the best practices and sort of kind of unearthing a lot of that. Was there any correlation to the either school improvement plans that you guys have worked really hard on or the district goals around how are we aligning best practices to what we've kind of stated as the sort of penultimate kind of north star in terms of how we're trying to move the district?
Yep, definitely. And I would say that fell in line with the strategic plan that's been in place, which has been aligned with the school improvement plans and it's also been in line with the teacher goals that we've been encouraging teachers to create this year. They have a student learning goal and a professional practice goal. We encourage teachers this year in their student learning goal to think about how those ideas all align, the strategic initiatives that we want our teachers to continue to think about. And their professional practice goal, we ask teachers to dive more into Equity Audit and integrating diversity, equity, inclusion into their classrooms. So, the hope is that, you know, the academic strand, the social emotional learning strand, the diversity, equity, inclusion strand are really the things that are kind of weaving through everything that we do and it all feels connected. It doesn't feel like a lot of disjointed things and that's, you know, at Pine Hill and at Chicarene and at the middle school and the high school as well, all very parallel conversations we're having.
Is there anything that surprised the group in terms of not aligning to the goals? Like there's something else that teachers or folks that were going through this mentioned was important, but maybe didn't directly tie to?
It's been pretty consistent across the board. We did this as a leadership team, we did this as an instructional leadership team and then we did it at each one of the schools and the amount of overlap between what the teachers have identified as best practices has been pretty impressive and has made me feel like we're all kind of rowing in the same direction. You know, we're going to continue to refine some of the best practices at the next meeting. We're going to ask teachers at the next professional element to think about anything that might be missing that they see, to think about 21st century learning and what skills are students going to need that we don't know what the market is for yet. So, we're going to have to go back and see if there are things that they want to add on to some of those best practices, but the ones that they came up with that the teachers have kind of taken ownership of have been strikingly similar across all the schools.
I think our faculty, if I can piggyback on that, the process of identifying best practices, there's a lot of collaboration and uniform agreement around that. Our discussions have been around these best practices aren't things that our students engage in when the teacher pulls out that great unit once a year, that this is what our children should be breathing 181 days throughout their educational career. So, that's for us, that's where the challenge lies because we, you know, we're still seeped in some traditional practices and at the elementary level, we're realizing with our own professional reflection how much we want to control the learning environment for our young children and a lot of these best practices and around innovation and inquiry are predicated on releasing children, prepping them with skills and understanding a process and, but that releasing children to have exploration in it, the learning process and the learning outcomes are going to look different and we should allow for that. And that's hard as an elementary educator not to want to control every step of the way. So, we want, as I say, the drooling with anticipation and the fire in the belly all day, every day, not for that occasional project or unit that excites children.
Can I just add one more thing too? If you look at our current strategic plan, which is expiring and we'll have a new one moving forward, but in there you'll see all the work that we did, as Denny mentioned, around the fortune of graduate, around challenge success, now DEI, 21st century learning, the silver linings of the pandemic and some of the feedback that we've been hearing from staff is, you know, this year we work on this and then we work on this and then we work on this and we've worked in all these buckets. And this was our way of getting the teachers to say, given your experience, given everything you've tried the last few years, everything that you've learned, if we take away all the names and the edu jargon, what is just the best practice? Like how would you put all those things together and weave them together and now we have a list that teachers can be practicing, that we as leaders can be looking for and reinforcing? So, people, as Denny said, don't feel that's so disjointed, it's just we boiled it down to what do we expect in every classroom at Pine Hill as a district?
Sounds great. It'd be interesting to see sort of the final version, if there is such a thing, because I, well, it probably is a symptom of goals, it certainly would help us as we're going through that kind of goal-defining and that set of strategic.
Yeah, and I think we're all guilty of, you know, setting goals for ourselves and saying, "Well, I already do that, I already do that." And I think there's some of that, "Well, we already do this." And it's like, okay, let's hold ourselves accountable now and let's see it.
You said these meetings were building-specific or everybody was the other?
They were building-specific, led by the building instructional leaders.
So, we did it once with all of the instructional leaders, K to 12, like train the trainer and then they went back to their buildings and did it with the rest of our faculties.
And the power in teacher leaders helps us grow our capacity to sustain that focus.
Perfect. Anybody else? Good. Dr. Brown?
Well, it's wonderful to be here tonight. We haven't met in this space in a very long time. Since our last meeting, I wanted to highlight some of the focal points that we've been working on at Pine Hill School. As you know, as parents, our teachers have been meeting with parents and caregivers around fall conferences, goal-setting for student learning. There's a lot of energy. Nice to have our community back in the building for the collaboration. I was reminding us that we report on student progress on a quarterly, on a quarterly schedule, twice a year through conferences and twice a year through our report on student progress. And I wanted to make mention-
progress. And I wanted to make mention, I don't remember if we've talked about this at a school committee level before, but our goal over the next year is to work in collaboration with our sister school in Dover, and to ultimately have a report on student progress, a report card tool that has been updated and reflects the most powerful learning standards that we aim to show that students make progress in, and to incorporate the Portrait of a Graduate tenants that are, we used to call the soft skills, those habits of mind, habits of heart, and certainly how students are applying our ultimate goal, those Portrait of a Graduate qualities. So we hope to have a unified report card for both elementary schools, perhaps for next year. We certainly appreciate that sometimes curveballs happen, but that is our goal. I won't be redundant and share that our MCAS scores, parent reports were mailed home today to our Dover and Sherburne families. Behind the scenes, I wanted to remind, we talked a lot about this in the past, and for those who are new, we have several intervals throughout the year that are teaching teams with all of the instructional coaches and our intervention staff, and our guidance staff, and our administrative staff. We meet together with every grade-level team, what we call our data cycles, or our data team meetings. And we look at quantitative and qualitative information we have about students academically and in the social emotional learning realm. And we make sure that students are making effective progress, and that we're responding to student progress with intervention or challenge based on what students need. And that helps our teachers plan for their whole group instruction, their small group instruction, and individualized supports that we support students with. So we're in the process of those data team meetings this week. They're going very efficiently and effective, and we'll deploy all of the intervention staff that we've been training and honing in our building to make sure that students are supported appropriately. Beth and Denny mentioned launching work with our faculty to help our educators understand the important outcomes of the equity audit, and you're launching that at Pine Hill School next Monday. So we're very excited about that. And an additional enrichment afforded through our fabulous CSA is the Broadmore Naturalist Experience that really accentuates our physical science and life science units at every grade level. So our first graders got to meet a real-life skunk today at Pine Hill School. It was super exciting, so thank you for that. Those are the big highlights.
Hopefully, they didn't meet the action end of the skunk.
No, the, it had been de pepe le pue.
I will state that my child's teacher reached out about the exciting news about the skunk. And I said, just as long as this is not a rotating class pet that you take home. I am in support of this.
Vicarious tomato sauce. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Warrant report?
Yeah, so you have a short warrant report this month. Actually, I was preparing our packet for this meeting on the same day that we were preparing your every two-week warrants for Sherburne. So you'll have a little extra large report next month. But you, again, just for the new members, we highlight, we process warrants for the town by where the funding source is coming from, and within the general fund line item on the towns, it's going to be posted to. So that's why you see general fund out of district, those are out of district costs, and general fund school are everything in district budget. So just to give you a little more information, as I try to incorporate in all my reports a little more budget training. So that's sort of how we code the warrants as they come over to the town hall. And obviously, food service is the cafeteria. It doesn't process them on a monthly basis. I always think Amanda has been coming religiously over here to sign a warrant, so thank her for that. Moving on to your first look at how fiscal year '23 is looking. And remember again, your budget that we're working off of fiscal year '23 was approved last March, right? So obviously, a lot of things happened between March and when we opened up the school in September. And so that are some, those are some of the variations that you'll see throughout the report. Obviously, things change both in our composition of staff, in the composition of students who are placed out of district, and therefore, we're already starting the year with some variances. So if we look at just the salaries, I'll highlight a couple of things for you. And one thing I didn't include in the report, but I will add for next time, just so that we have it sort of captured in our report, is that you do have the extra section that we added this summer that's being charged to the non-resident tuition fund. So that's not impacting our general fund budget, but that's something to keep in mind. Because as we prepare the budget for fiscal year '24, the numbers appear that we will incorporate that into the budget. So I will add that to your report, so it stays front and center for us. But one key thing I wanted to highlight on salaries is that through discussions with administration, both at the building level and also special education level, it was determined that they would like to take two of their special education assistants and convert that to a special educator, a teaching position. They felt that would strengthen the direct construction for students in IEP. So you will see that reflected where we have a positive surplus in educational assistance and a negative variance in your special education teacher line, but that almost zeros out. Therefore, you know, we hired a teacher that was equivalent to two EEA salaries. And then there's some other variances that, again, just based what I said, on staffing changes. We had a few staff members leave, and their replacements were either more expensive or less expensive. We hired some new positions that we had a budget placeholder for. Some of those came in, some of those came over, came over the budget. But I feel like what we do try to do is hire the best person for a position, and try to incorporate how we can deal with any budgetary issues in other areas. So do know that that stays in the forefront of our minds when we are hiring staff for the school. On the expenditure side, obviously, it's very early in the year, so I really don't have any variances to bring to your attention on the expenditure side. We will focus, though, now on out-of-district, and there is where I do have some, actually, some large variances to discuss with you tonight. As we say, that's why I wanted to highlight, that in March is when we set our budget, and obviously, a lot of things happened between March and now. And so I did pull together a summary that I typically use for you during your budget planning purposes, to show you how we budgeted for out-of-district, and sort of where we sit right now with out-of-district. So we had budgeted 10 out-of-district placements for a total of about $800,000. As of right now, we have 13 placements at a total out-of-district placement cost of just under $1 million, too. So therefore, we're looking at about a $400,000 difference in our budget between what we budgeted and where we are now. So it is early in the year. We have a lot of time to sort of work with the town. I've already sort of given some heads up to the town that we have, we're in this situation, to see how we can work with them. There's a couple different avenues. One, the town does have a special education stabilization fund that has about $100,000. That fund is there for this very reason, so that when we run into years where we haven't budgeted enough, that's a reserve that we can go from. Obviously, it's not enough for the situation we have this year. We're still waiting for our circuit breaker numbers to be, our circuit breaker reimbursement numbers to be finalized. Remember, we get reimbursed in fiscal year '23 for our fiscal year '22 expenses. So we do a, sort of a rough estimate, but once we, until we file and really know how everything's going to be audited, we don't know our final number. So I'm waiting for that, to hope that that gives us a little bit more than we had pulled into the budget. If you remember correctly, last year, there was some pressure to meet a budgetary line item, or budget number. So we took a little bit of our extra circuit breaker, that was about $60,000, and applied it to the budget. But subsequent to that, we also had an unexpected placement. So we aided at both ends. So we're really depleted in our any extra circuit breaker cushion that we have right now. And so that's where we're just going to have to see where we go for this year.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, go ahead. I was going to say, keep in mind that, so we're seeing increased expenses in fiscal year '23. We will reap additional circuit breaker in fiscal year '24. So there will be some financial relief in '24, but not to help us here in '23.
To clarify, those numbers are affecting Sherburne, but it's not just Pine Hill students or students at the elementary level. This is across the spectrum.
So remember, your out-of-district covers any Sherburne resident from the age of three to 22, who doesn't attend a Dover Sherburne public school. So that's why we actually try to really segregate. When we talk about your budget, we talk about in district, which is Pine Hill, and then we talk about out-of-district, which is Sherburne residents K through 3 through 22. And I will say, we've gotten really good about that. We've gotten really good, too, about not impacting Pine Hill's budget for things that are happening in out-of-district. So it's not like we're going to put a budget freeze on Pine Hill because we have an out-of-district issue that we have to deal with. It's really completely separate, is how we try to manage it, because it's just how the regional agreement is set up between Dover and Sherburne. So Dover covers all Dover out-of-district placements, and Sherburne covers all to the local, the local district's budget, even though it's really not, not your purview, because it's really, it is and it isn't because of the way it works. But that is very important to make, to make point of, is that that is not just pre-K through 5, that's pre-K through 22.
This is not divided by two. Half goes to Dover, half to Sherburne. This is Sherburne.
Every town picks up their own, yes. Because if you go look at your counterpart in Dover, their out-of-district budget's like $3 million. So they have probably three times as many out-of-district placements as.
This may be something that the other committee members know more detail of, but if you could spend a minute and just explain to me more about who gets placed in out-of- is it someone that needs extra help that is being placed in another school because we can't accommodate?
We can't accommodate their needs, yes.
Right. And then, so in the budget, you have probably people that are falling off because they're reaching 22.
Correct.
And you are probably anticipating people that are coming on.
Well, you're right. The anticipation is, is we anticipate if they're, here in Sherburne, if we, like, we have two potentials budgeted. So we had some needs, or students that we knew back in March had potential to be placed out. So we did have placeholders for two students. Obviously, we ended up having three more than that. And we, for a placeholder, we put an average cost. Usually, our placeholder is $65,000 to $70,000. That's what we consider like a typical placement. Then we could have placements that come in, though, much greater than that. And so in this case, it was a combination of having three more placements than we thought, and some costing more than we had budgeted. So a combination of those three things bring you up to the $400,000. What we try to categorize for you a little bit in this chart is where the age groups are. Because to your very point, when you have students that are 12 plus age 22, that's a population that eventually is going to roll off. But then when you see them in the younger years, you're going to know you're going to be carrying them most likely until they're either 12th grade or up to the age 22.
Right.
We also like to show you the different types of placements. Obviously, the most economical, that doesn't cost as much as if you send someone to another public school that already has in-district special education programs. So that's your first column, tuition to mass public. The next column is non-public, so those are private schools that are approved by the state to be, to be able to accept public school students in out-of-district. And those rates are offset by the state, so there's a per diem rate for those, and that's what is charged to us, and then that's what's incorporated into circuit breaker reimbursement. And then there's the collaborative. So you'll hear us talk about tech and accept. They all run collaborative programs, and as a member district, we're allowed to send students there, and it's a much, the member cost versus a non-member cost. So when our special education staff are looking at placements, our out-of-district placement coordinators, they are looking at where, you know, they'll start with the collaboratives and see if that, if there's a match there. And if not, then we'll move on. But obviously, we want to support the collaboratives that we participate in, but it's also usually a less expensive option for us. And then there are some out-of-state schools. You guys don't have any right now, but there are students that are placed out of state in approved schools. And then just, I will do, I'll do a little sample calculation for you, because when we present your budget in November, of sort of how circuit breaker is calculated, I sort of have an exhibit that I'll include, and so you can better understand sort of how that's derived. So we will continue to work with the town on this. Like I said, we've got a couple different options that we can continue to work with. It's still early in the year, and I could be back here in November, and there's been changes of placements, and the number looks, you know, slightly different. It's just one of those very volatile segments of education, and it's even more volatile when you're a smaller school district, because you only have so much bandwidth. And so that's, it's always been a little bit of a struggle for Sherburne. But we, you guys, Tom Sherburne and the Pine Hill and our region are doing such a good job of trying to keep as many students in as we can. If you think about it, you only have 13 students compared to how many potential students that you have in the town, pre-K through 12. That's actually, you know, we do a good job. It's just that it does add some extra expenses to your budget. So just thinking about the '24 a little bit, so it's amazing, but your next meeting, we will be presenting the fiscal year '24 budget. And we will have four months from then to discuss and make changes and make revisions, because in your March meetings, where you'll make your final vote approval, and then it goes on to the state, or the state, to the town from there. And we will have all those meetings in between to, obviously, it's our baseline that we roll out in November, what we know now. If we know there's any new initiatives that we're thinking of, but most likely, those will come. More of your January and February meetings. This is one of those unique years, well, it happens every year, but we're going to be in a situation where we won't have our contracts in place for '24 for all of our bargaining units. And so what we do from a budgeting standpoint, just so you know, is we'll take payroll as of this year, the actual payroll, and those positions will roll into the budget. In fact, we've already done that. And we will then come up with a reserve that's going to sit in one line item, that will cover salaries for every single employee in the district to be spread once we have contracts approved. So it'll look a little different, because if you have the same person in the line item, and they're still, and they're there, they're going to be here in '24, it's going to have a zero increase, right? Where we've had changes in staffing, it will be plus or minus. But that's sort of the methodology that we will follow. And that's, you know, a chunk of that's 85% budget. So we will continue to work on that. And if you have any, if you have any thoughts or things that you would like us to dive deeper a little bit, just let Amanda know, and she can let us know, and we can incorporate that into the budget presentation.
Thank you, Dawn. Questions?
No questions.
Cool. Moving along. So the annual enrollment report?
South Shore, the October 1 enrollment report for Pine Hill School is included in your packet. And as you know, when we begin to think about budget for next year, and the number of sections we'll need at each grade level, we'll use this information, as well as documented in migration and out-migration data over the last several years, to kind of gauge where our numbers would be potentially in September, so we can plan accordingly with the numbers of sections and teachers we need.
Questions online? All right. The MASC review of policies, it's included in the package.
Who's on your policy?
I am. So to give you the gist of what this is, you'll see in the memo here, there's an outline of why, what we're recommending to the school committee to consider. I've been on the committee for only a few months, and what we have been trying to do is look at the recommendations that are being made by the MASC for updates that we need to make to the policies that we already have, as well as policies that don't exist yet that need to be added to our manuals. And what we have found is that the, we have not done a full audit in about 10 years. And it's quite alarming, because alarming, because there are a lot of things that are outdated, and things that have changed, um, and different focuses that we need to, um, take on. And I think that it's, we have decided as a, as a policy, on the policy committee, we've decided that we think, um, it's too much for us to just review on our own, um, and that we would like to use the resources available through the MASC, um, to do the full audit of all of the policies, because it's, it's a very thick binder, um, and they will help us to go through all of them, maybe starting with the ones that were recommended that are not a part of the, the, um, the packet already, to add those in, um, address the things that should have been changed, and then go through the full audit. Um, the cost of this is ten thousand five hundred, um, to be spread over three fiscal years. Um, and, um, the recommendation that we are making is for it to be split, um, sixty percent by the region, twenty by Dover, and twenty by Sherburne. Um, there's, there's other, um, information in the packet if you wanted to review that, but we did do, um, we did referral checks, um, on people that have used the audit, um, committee through MASC. Um, and everyone has given glowing reviews, and we were comfortable with making the recommendation of doing this. Um, I personally think that it's very important, um, because I think that, you know, we're, it's compliance, you know, and it, as much as a volunteer can try and help and go through this, this is what they do all day, every day. Um, and I think that it would be valuable to have experts help us in, in this audit.
I believe we have to vote on this.
We do have to vote on it. Before we vote, any kind of questions for, uh, Gita? Did you guys look at entities other than MASC? I know you checked the references, and that was sort of explained in the package.
We spoke with, um, it's, it's Joan is the attorney, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we spoke with Joan, um, to, to see how much they could handle as our attorneys to go through it. Um, and what we determined with that was that the MASC was the best option to, um, to use in doing a full audit of all of the, the policies, uh, from a cost perspective, time perspective, and from experience perspective. Um, again, because there's so much that hasn't been touched in about ten years.
They set the boilerplate, um, for policies, so by having them do it, the efficiency is, is there.
Right.
I will say, I was on school committee when we did this in two thousand twelve, and it was, uh, it's up, it was the subcommittee that did it all, and they took it section by section. It took them probably over two years, a caving at the tail end. Um, and they, they actually still use the base, um, MASC model, but they did all the work themselves. And it is, it is cumbersome, and I think it's become even more complicated since the last ten years, so I, and I don't think that there is a group that could do it better than MASC.
Yeah. And, you know, it's also, um, yeah, it's, I think it's looking at it as there may be turnover and the school committee members, um, and change, and if, if you get halfway through some of the audit and you're not, you don't complete it, and you're adding someone else into the committee, it could, it could change. I think having, um, the MASC be the people that are leading us through, and again, any changes that we're making would be brought to the school committee. So, it's not like we're gonna make these changes and just take their word for it, right? We're going to have them help us through it and then be approving the change.
And I read the contents as they will actually be delivering a revised set of policies. It's not, here's some themes, you gotta go figure.
No, no. They're, they'll help us through the whole thing. And, and again, we, what we would do is, um, tackle the things that, uh, in the order that we thought, the order we thought was most important would be, address the things that should be in there that are not in there, address the things that should have been updated that haven't been updated, and then go through all the other things that need to, to be addressed, um, and kind of take it in that way. And although they give us three years, I highly doubt, from the conversations we've had, that it would take three years to get through the whole thing. Um, it just gives us a little bit of flexibility on how we pay for it.
Okay. Then, in terms of timing, with the equity audit and kind of parsing through those results, does it make sense to do this concurrently, one in front of the other, um, from a timing perspective? Just, I'm assuming, in looking at the equity audit results, there's a lot of looking at policies and establishing standards and that kind of stuff, which feels similar to this.
Yeah, well, given that these are based off of legal standards, and MASC has documented them all, you know, up to date, I, I think there's no reason to begin this work concurrently with an equity audit. And, uh, I know that MASC and MASs are both doing equity work as well, so they have that lens in all of the...
So, there's no reason to do it?
There's no reason not to do it at the same time.
Because they can happen, and they should be able to happen at the same time.
All of the MASC policies are up to date as, as well as they could be, so we might as well start this work.
Yeah. I, I don't, um, I honestly don't know how, um, school committee members could go through all of these policies in, to the level that they need to be, um, audited in a timely manner without the help of people that basically govern that, in my opinion.
From a budgetary standpoint, all three school committees have, like, a small special project reserve built into each of their budgets on an annual basis. Um, and so, even if we just pay this over two years, it's not gonna put a financial hardship on any of districts. Um, and so, I, I wasn't concerned at all that the cost, um, probably would like to see us wrap it up in two years versus trying to spread it out over three years. So, um, from a budgetary standpoint, you each have funds set aside every year for things that come off, like the superintendent's search fee, you know, some, some of the extra stuff we did last year. So, just keep that in mind, too, as you go forward. You do have a little, um, you know, a little reserve of money for, um, school committee initiatives that will help, help you guys.
Okay. So, no further questions. I'd like to invite a motion to approve the MSC review of policies, um, proposal that's included in our package for tonight's meeting. I have a motion.
Kristin Aberle, so moved.
Second.
Gita Russo, second.
Russo, second. Uh, and we gotta do a roll call vote, or, because we're on here? So, all those in favor?
You're off here.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Thank you. That's, uh, I think important to make sure that we understand sort of where we are in terms of just legal precedent, and then making sure that we've got a good set of policies.
It was a long drive, I can't realize that there were some things that haven't been, um, had updated. And, uh, I think we've been okay, but I think that we should be compliant. So, I think it's a good idea.
Agreed.
The things that have become obvious, um, and necessary, we've addressed during the last few years, but it's been with a lot of, um, time and effort on the part of the policy subcommittee, and, and they've done incredible work, but it's just not sustainable.
I think we benefit from the policy subcommittee. There's a lot of legal background and educator background on those committees that kind of do some of that, and we do it one-off, but I...
Too much.
It's kind of one-off. This requires sort of dedicated.
Yep.
Perfect. Next is a consent agenda for the, um, approval of the September twentieth minutes that were included in your packet. Um, everybody read it? Any edits or adjustments? I didn't note anything. Okay. So, no questions. I'll invite a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, which includes the approval of the minutes for the September twentieth Sherburne School Committee meeting.
Kristin Aberle.
Second?
Gita Russo, second.
Gita Russo, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anamously approved. Thank you. Um, and just for communication, so the minutes from the Dover School Committee, the regional school committee, uh, meetings, uh, from June and September were included in there, um, as well as the tech reserve increase and the MCAS results. Was there anything on the tech reserve that you wanted to kind of call attention to?
No. So, uh, as Dawn mentioned, we were part of the tech collaborative, and they had, uh, revenue last year. They were hoping to be able to move into their, uh, capital reserve fund, which was currently capped, and they're hoping to, uh, increase the cap to, to be able to put that money away for future expenses. Um, so, unless there's an objection, there's no need to vote. It's just automatically support unless you're concerned, then you vote against it, and we report it back to the Board of Directors. I don't, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to support their, their thinking in that realm, so...
Questions, Dawn?
Thank you.
And then the MCAS were, results were included in there. I think, Dr. Brown, you also mentioned that individualized results are being sent home to families as well?
Uh huh, uh, what they call parent reports. And I believe at a future meeting, um, I'll be able to talk to you about how we, uh, do item analysis and, and look for trends, and how we strengthen our, uh, workaround curriculum and assessment and instruction based on, um, MCAS serving as one data point for that. So, I, I can talk you through the process of how we use those results in a future meeting.
I personally think that'll be helpful. I mean, there's a lot that's happened over the past two or three years, and seeing sort of it's one data point of many, but understanding benchmarks, trends, how initiatives that everybody is sort of investing in, and seeing sort of, uh, outcomes and, and progress certainly would be helpful to see how you guys sort of think throughout, you know, and digest and, and pull that apart.
And we have social, emotional learning data points that I can speak to as well, based on student surveys.
Sounds good. Um, so, let's see, items for the November fifteenth meeting, so that's our next meeting. Um, is there anything that you guys want to bring up? If not, normal course would be just to flip a note over to Amanda, and, uh, we can include that if it's sort of fallen behind with, uh...
I think Dover's voting on the policy, uh, next week. Is their meeting is next week, right? So, that might be an agenda item. It's just once we get the approval from everyone, what we're doing, what the next steps are.
Yes.
Yep.
So, an update to what's going on with the policy.
Yes, and when we're, when we're engaging and when we're starting, as long as we get the approval.
Anything else? No? Here none. We're just about on time, pretty good. Thank you, everybody, for, uh, providing these updates. Super helpful. Um, good progress in the years. Moving along at pace, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we vote to adjourn?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, all those in favor? Do we have to motion?
Uh, you can just do an animus of motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, cool. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Six thirty-two.